All right, I'd like to call the Planning Board meeting of August 8th, 2024 to order. Persons who wish to do so are invited to attend in person or view the meeting at the length that's on the website or joined by phone. Instructments, please note that the in-person meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technology problems interrupt the remote connection. Call the meeting to order. We'll start by introducing Planning Board members and staff. To my immediate right, Jane Ramsden. All the way out down the end is my friend Hank McCarroll, Doug Cook. I'm Rick Noonan. We have Jane, oh Jane, we have Beverly Bookin in remote setting. Staff wise, we have Alex Koppelman, our Community Development Director, Greg Caddam Torrey, our Planning Director, and our Senior Planner. We have a single genitive item this evening. It's the review of Master General Law 40A 3A. MBTA Communities Zoning District Scenarios. The Planning Board will review and discuss draft districts in draft zoning amendment language to comply with the 40A 3A. MBTA Communities Requirements. So we do have.
Sure, so I'll share my screen for the presentation. That Emily and I will provide. At least I have a mouse tonight. That was nice. Everybody can see that okay? So just kind of an overview of the agenda for this evening. Do a little recap on where we landed last week with the agreed upon sub-districts, which at this point have been translated into a zoning map. Which really provide the basis for Emily Ennis, who's here this evening. To kind of take off from that as we've discussed the where and what type of multifamily housing may be permitted in these districts. To translate that into zoning amendment in the form of an overlay district. And then she has also done the job of looking through the ordinance to make sure that there aren't any other places that potentially could create a conflict. To not actually enable as of right multifamily zoning. So she'll walk through the multifamily overlay district, which is the meat of the amendments. With some specific focus on the dimensional standards and the inclusionary provisions. And then there are a new host of site plan review requirements. For multifamily projects in these particular districts. And then again, kind of a little bit of some of the cross referencing that needs to occur in other sections of the ordinance to make sure. That there are no conflicts for pursuing as a right multifamily. And then from that point, we can again, I think, focus in on some specific areas that we certainly want to get some clarity from the board on its recommendation. Particularly with the dimensional standards and parking requirements. And then also entertain any other questions that you might have. And then if we get to a positive point, then we'll also talk about some of the timeline and next steps depending on the board's action this evening. So the final scenario that was presented by RKG last week. You recall these two maps. One on the left of the screen indicates the West Gloucester District in orange. And also highlighted the areas that, you know, there's a lot of restricted areas. So that was really. You know, kind of the best option for creating a district in the West Gloucester Station area. And then on the right, the familiar areas in the R5 and also the two higher density districts. Around Maplewood Ave, pink and up near Gloucester Crossing. Welcome David Rosen. In purple. And so that has now been translated into. A zoning map that can be adopted as part of the multifamily overlay district ordinance and reference. So this is a draft of the zoning map again with two station areas and the districts that have been identified. In the legend, it goes through the naming of those districts by color. We've kind of made sure that we really reference these districts related to streets or areas of the community. We formally called, for instance, the purple area, the Howyard area. That's a particular development that could change over time. So that's now been called Schoolhouse area. And then again, the downtown station area, West Gloucester and Maplewood Ave were the area that we had been calling. Either the Gloucester Mill or the Housing Authority area. So that's the map that will be going along with it. And again, Emily has kind of taken off and now defined. What it means for everything that we've discussed so far for the allowance in these different areas and put it into an ordinance. So.
Just to interrupt though, for the public, could we recap a little bit how we got to these four areas? You want me to do it?
No, I'm happy to. You know.
You know, one paragraph.
Okay, I'll try to do it. I'll try to do it in three minutes. Somebody start the timer. So again, we, this has been a long discussion, starting way back in. With the first public forum with the community identifying areas that they thought may be more appropriate for multifamily housing. Taking into consideration, there is a lot of flexibility in the law and the guidelines. But there are some also absolutes that, you know, half of the capacity that's required for Gloucester. Has to be within one or both of these half mile radius around the station areas. And so we knew we would be arriving at a substantial amount of rezoning or overlay zoning in these areas. Because of that requirement. Other areas were looked at and one of the things that's really important to remember is that. For better or for worse, the state's guidelines. Really require gross density, which is something that's a little bit unfamiliar for the way that we typically do things. We typically loan zone land and lots. Their approach also includes right of ways. So there's, there's a real kind of push and pull in terms of. A minimum density requirement of 15 units per acre and a capacity of 2,270 units. So we kind of refocused through subcommittee work over the course of the last month. And have arrived at portions of the downtown area in the R5 district that will allow three family. Some air, a smaller area in West Gloucester that also would provide for three family on certain sized lots in the orange district down the right. And then a couple of opportunities to really promote housing and particularly. Housing that would trigger our inclusionary requirements and provide some affordable housing. In the pink area in the Maplewood area and also up near Howyard. On a two acre site adjacent to the Howyard project that folks might be familiar with. That one in particular, we needed to get HLC's approval to expand into. A portion of a property which we have received. So at this point, these are the four sub-districts that Emily has provided. Sorry, I'm like, sure. Is that three minutes?
Three minutes on the boat.
I don't feel like that sounded really simple for somebody to bring them up to speed, but that's, that's, that's where we are.
Can I just ask a question?
Yep.
Why do we need to ask HCD's permission to add in schoolhouse? Did I read that correctly? Did I hear that correctly? Why?
Sure, that was one. So the way the guidelines are set up, you, you can zone an area. And you then start to look at the number of lots in that area that comply, that can actually produce as of right housing based on the parameters that you've set up in your zoning. In that particular case, we were not putting an overlay over the entire 33 acres that is the Gloucester Crossing site. We were focused on a portion of it. It doesn't follow property boundaries. So it's. Kind of what's been drawn is really kind of paper space in terms of a portion of that property. And when you do that. You need their permission to basically almost kind of subdivide a lot with overlay.
Gotcha. Okay, makes sense. Thank you.
Laura's here.
Emily, introduce yourself. So for the record, my name is Emily Ennis. I'm President of Ennis Associates, sort of seven person urban planning and design firm out of Newport, so shared coastal community. While you have been working with my colleagues at RKG on the geography and on the map. Now we're moving towards attached. So one is to demonstrate compliance, that you've met the unit capacity. That you've defined the right areas. Now we're taking that and turning it into a zoning that you all will be able to use going forward. So I'm going to walk you through, Greg, if you don't mind moving to the next slide. I'm going to walk you through the different components of the zoning. Just so we can kind of chunk the conversation into those pieces. I'm going to take you all the way through and then we'll come back. And we can discuss individual pieces. The genesis of this text is the sample zoning put out by HLC at the beginning as a guide for communities. I actually don't write that zoning, so I'm familiar with it. The key however, for you all is to translate it into zoning that works for Gloucester. That captures the discussions that you had in the geography and the dimensions that we're using with compliance model. And then also to look at your current zoning and make sure that it format is right, that we haven't found anything else in the zoning. That might be a barrier. So we start off with the purpose. And this again, there's, there's many ways you can discuss the purpose. So you know, if you see something that you want to change. Feel free, but in general with most of the communities, it's obviously the right to be a housing size and types. Where the housing is located and the idea that is linked to walkability for a number of public purposes. Preserving open space in a community by locating new development where there's infrastructure, existing infrastructure and. That idea of that infrastructure also being pedestrian and bike friendly infrastructure and the housing supply trap. Next slide please, Greg. So the first pieces are, now we've got to link the zoning to the map. Greg just showed you the map. So this is just the section of the zoning that says, here's where it applies. And how you can find out where it applies. This also allows us to define the four sub-districts, which means that later on in the zoning. We can change some of the requirements based on the sub-district. That's why we have them. So you'll see that coming in. And then we also established this as an overlay district. We talk about how it relates to the underlying zoning and the rest of the zone. So that's the section. Next slide please, Greg. And then this is, as Greg mentioned earlier, the, the actual zoning map that the text will refer to. Next slide. So now we start to talk about the uses and how they are allowed within this overlay district. And it's important to understand that the overlay district, once somebody chooses to use that overlay district, that's what they're using. So they can't say, oh, you know, I like the uses in the overlay, but I prefer the dimensional standards and the base. They can't mix and match. Once they're using the overlay, this is what they're using. So. And the downtown station area and the West Gloucester station area really been, the discussions have been about a lower level of housing density in those areas. So keeping the ability to do single family, having two family housing, and then allowing the multifamily dwellings as a right, but for three units, three dwelling units. Maplewood Avenue and Schoolhouse Road area, the idea is that multifamily dwellings would start at four units and then. Or four units in a single building or two or more buildings on the same lot. With more than one residential dwelling unit, which is HLC's way and now the state's definition rather. This is how you do two duplexes or larger buildings with more units, but the minimum two duplexes.
Can you go back to that point that you just made about not being able to use?
Pick and choose?
Pick and choose?
Yeah, absolutely.
Just clarify that for anyone else who might be on the call.
Yeah, happy to. So actually Greg, if you go back to, to the establishment. Two slides, there you go. So this establishment basically says, okay, we've got an overlay district here. It is superimposed on the underlying zoning district. So if you're, you have a property in that zoning district, you have a base district always. Property is always zoned for some, almost always zoned for something. You retain your rights under that base district to do what you want to do. Now we're adding an overlay on top of it. And you have additional rights as a property owner. You can choose to use base district. You can choose to use the overlay district. You can also choose to do nothing. But if you want to redevelop, it's going to be the base for the overlay. Once you've made that decision, you have to stick with, if you've chosen base overlay, you have to stick with the uses, dimensional standards, other controls of base overlay. If you choose to use, oh, the base district, if you choose to use overlay district, then you have to stick with the uses, dimensional consoles and other standards of the overlay district. So, and thank you for asking that because that's an important question. So going back to the uses. So first decision, if you're going to use this overlay, you're in the downtown station area in West Gloucester, you're limited to single two or. Multifamily dwelling, but multifamily dwelling of only three units. If you are in Maplewood Avenue or Schoolhouse Road, four units or more. And the ability to have multiple buildings on a lot. And we'll see that later.
I think it's just worth to summarize that in the. Larger areas where the zoning applies and then the downtown station and the west station area. That's where you're seeing the ability to do a three family, which isn't a substantial difference than what's allowed now. It's allowed through special permit. The areas where you can do larger, more developments consisting of more units are targeted to, you know, specific sites of opportunity. So I just want to, you know, clear, clarify that.
That's a great point. And actually Greg, if you don't mind jumping back to the map before this, that allows us to see the, the yellow there. On the left-hand side and yellow to my eyes and the orange on the right-hand side, those are your. The three family districts and then the pink and the blue are your larger density districts. There are much, to your point, it's much smaller. Size or districts. So it's a great point. All right, if you don't mind jumping ahead too. So now we're talking about the dimensional standards and you can see again, we have dimensional standards by the sub-districts. So. Having the sub-districts allows us to tailor uses the dimensional standards and some of the other standards so that we can respond to existing conditions. In the area and the community desires for the area. So the downtown station and the West Gloucester station, you can see that the lot area, the minimum, which, et cetera. Those are all representative of the smaller parcel sizes that you already have in those areas. Maplewood Ave, Schoolhouse Road, to your point earlier, you've got smaller districts, but there are also larger lot sizes within those districts. And that combination of geography and dimensional standards is what creates what you can do on that site. Key thing here is you see, not only was the use limited to three family for the downtown station, West Gloucester station areas. You can also see we have a maximum dwelling units per lot in the area of three for each. And on Maplewood Ave and Schoolhouse Road, a density calculation, which is the dwelling units per acre as opposed to per lot. So that again is consistent with the type of dimensional standards you have. And there's also dimensional standards for accessory uses, which is consistent with other parts of your zoning. Next slide please.
Can I ask a question?
Sure. Yeah, should we, just a procedural question. Should we ask our questions as we go or should we save them to the end?
If it's easier for you to do them as you know.
Okay. I do think this is kind of the area where most of the input needs to be, so.
I'm happy with however you want to do it, so.
It's not me.
If you want, yeah, go ahead David.
So. It says in the middle of the chart, building height.
Yep.
Thirty-five feet.
Yes.
And then at the very bottom line, it says maximum building height, 12 feet.
That's the accessory uses.
Yeah, you have, if you follow.
There should be a black line, sorry, or like a.
Yeah, I think maybe if we use the same kind of coloring that's on the header column. And put a bar across for accessory use, you'll see that there's a break in the table. And those dimensional standards are for accessory use.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a great information.
I had a comment then also on this, which is that I had been a proponent. Of the first sentence, which just says the requirements of section 3.1.5 through 1.6 to 3.55. Are not applicable. 3.1.6 refers to height and there's A and B in 3.1.6 about height. And the first one says, if it's under 35 or. Right? If it's over 35 feet, it goes to city council. And if it's under 35 feet, it does not. So. If we still, if, if we just mean 3.1.6A. Or if we mean, because we still want over 35 feet to go to city council or no?
Yes, yeah. So I mean, that's, that's one of the. That, that was one, one point. And I think that was also raised, Sean, and sent in some comments. Because it couldn't be here this evening. So. I think, I think there, that's something that we should talk about in terms of trying to make sure that we're. We certainly don't want to create a conflict with the situation where we're saying in a table. You have an as of right 35, but then somewhere else in the ordinance, it says above 30 to 35, you need to go to the zoning board. So that's. That's what's trying to be addressed in that first comment. But then the question is, can somebody pursue? They're really not pursuing as of right if they also need a height exception.
True.
So.
Or a height exception.
So that they're not taking, they're not taking advantage of MFOD. So they're going back to existence.
So if they want to go over 35 feet, then they would have to follow the underlying district.
Got it.
Likewise, the only thing that I think we might have to think about is. Making sure that we don't create a conflict for the 55 foot.
Yes.
Because that's a situation where again, we don't want it to say. Over 35, you have to go to city council and we're saying 55 here.
And I think you sent me some language just as I was getting ready to come here. So well, we can, we can work on that. Yeah, absolutely.
I have a question. Existing housing with triple deckers, what's the normal height of them?
It's very variable. When we did this two years ago and provided a lot of examples, they, I mean, they range from 32 to 37. You know, some of the Victorians on Washington Street or, you know, other areas in the community are, are much higher. In that 35 to 37 foot range. So I think that's. That's something we can also talk about when we talk about design standard. We, we haven't really talked about roofline at all. The model that RKG ran really thinks about things in terms of stories. And then we, you know, the, the board and the city council can define what that means. If you say, you know, the existing 30 feet, then you're probably likely to get a flat roof building. Somebody's trying to put in, you know, eight to 10 foot ceilings and you need that. You know, those, those floor, those floor spaces that take up a foot. So, you know, it starts to really make. It probably ends up being a flat roof. So that's, that's something we can also talk about. But it's your recommendation. We, other than height, the downtown station dimensions are mirroring R5. With the exception with some language around front yard setback, which Emily will, will talk about. In West Gloucester, I think we talked about at the last meeting, other than the reduction in lot size, it follows the R10. The area is zoned R20, but there's a little bit of a forgiveness, forgiveness there. Because those R20 standards are very aggressive for a 6,000 square foot lot. And again, that threshold was picked because it's about. Where most of those lots are, they're between 6 and 8,000 square feet. The Maplewood Ave area is a little bit specialized. It's a bigger site, has that acre minimum. The height, you know, again, is that 35 feet. I think that's in line with at least what's there now. It's, it's actually. Taller than, it's higher than most of the buildings that are on that site. But certainly provides, you know, with both density and that height for that district. And then the schoolhouse again, is a little bit of a hybrid between what was already drafted and approved in the past for the. Overlay district. And that's where that 55 foot height comes from as well.
Yeah, so really.
One thing about the height, we ran with this two years ago and it didn't fly and, but I do want to remind everybody that in. Probably about 90% of single family zones throughout the country, 35 feet is the maximum typically. 30 is unusually low. So I see our going with it fine. My question here is, if I'm not mistaken. Can you do an accessory dwelling unit in a duplex or only in a single family house?
They're only, only for single family homes. As it's drafted in our ordinance right now.
Right. Which is to say that if you do a triplex, you can also add an ADU, correct?
Correct.
Right. So it may be worth a footnote that. Indicates that, but I don't know. I'm just saying, I don't want people to assume that an ADU is an add-on in addition. The additional density, because that would cause some people to be concerned.
Yep.
Well, I mean, I think that our, our ADU ordinance says it's only accessory to a single family.
Okay, that's, I'm just, I'm just raising it.
Yeah. And we also say, these are the uses that you could do in the overlay and you can't mix and match. So I think, I think that one's kind of covered.
So what is the accessory then on this chart? What is the accessory referring to?
It's referring to garage. Mostly garage, sheds, parking, the, the other, the other things that would be accessory to, to a three family.
Well, I misunderstood. I thought it was accessory use, ADU, not just accessory building. I apologize.
The accessory dwelling use.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, we, we've defined it as a garage, parking shed and accessory signs.
And that, and that heading of accessory uses other than signs is the same. Heading that is in the one, two and three family in, in the dimensional requirements of section three. So we're using the same format of you have your principal use requirements and then you have your accessory use requirements.
Should it say accessory uses other than signs and accessory dwelling units?
ADUs? I don't, I don't think we, because we don't allow the use in the multifamily overlay district, I don't think we have to address it with a. You know, a bell and suspenders of saying, really? We're saying not this use because we don't allow it in the district.
You have a question before we need to move on?
So if you'll leave it there for a moment, you'll see there are two footnotes, one for Maplewood Ave and one for the downtown station. For Maplewood Avenue, we are specifically allowing multi-building lots only in Maple Avenue. More than one principal building, but the other dimensional requirements have to be complied with. So you can't just cram them in. You have to follow these requirements. And then for the downtown station, Greg alluded to it earlier. We have that minimum front yard of 15, but because of the varying conditions of, of the buildings that are in this area already. We have some, the ability to relax it. So if you are building a new building in this area and you have a building on either side. With different front setbacks, you can choose to match one or the other buildings on either side. Or you can do the front yard setback, the average of those two setbacks. And the idea is to keep the front setback relatively consistent with what's going on. So.
That, and that relaxing is not a ZVA trip. That's a.
That's part of the whole site plan review. Yes, absolutely. The idea is that we're not having to have.
Right.
An applicant come in and go in different directions. It's all within this.
I'd like to address the lot area minimum square foot also, because as we know, the. Minimum lot size for the downtown area is 5,000 square feet and for West Gloucester it is what?
20,000.
20,000 square feet. So the reason for anyone who's listening that this does 4,000 and 6,000 is to. Capture any lots that currently exist that are 4,000 square feet. Or more in the downtown area and 6,000 feet or more in the West Gloucester area, because there are a lot of non-conforming lots. And it does not give anybody the right to create a new 4,000 square foot lot or a new 6,000 square foot lot in the West Gloucester station. Just that's not misread or misunderstood.
Next slide please, Greg. So the next component is the off-street parking loading requirements. And you can see them up there. Again, they vary slightly by sub-district. And the. This was the levels that were tested in the compliance model.
They're actually, I just want to clarify that. So these mirror the existing requirements in the underlying districts. What was modeled was, was more conservative at two. So that's something that we really. I think we kind of went around back and forth in some of the last discussions about whether or not that may be too much. Or, or, you know, maybe there's a compromise at one and a half. But just to be clear, the, this, this is what would happen if there was the proposal for. Residential use in these districts with the exception of the Schoolhouse Road area, because that's currently. Zoned extensive business overlay would allow for housing on that site. But it mirrors the standards that would apply to the Howyer project.
So there's essentially no change to the parking.
If this were adopted, it would be, it would be akin to what's required in the underlying district. Yes.
I would like to point out that there's an A in front of residential, but since there's no B, there doesn't really need to be.
Yes. Microsoft Word and it's fun formatting. Thank you for the catch. So. There, there's a lot of not very nice things said about Microsoft Word when dealing with this. It does allow the planning board to authorize tandem parking and to modify the design and layout standards of your existing section. Um it does allow the planning board to authorize tandem parking and to modify the design and layout standards of your existing section, four point one. Um through the site plan review process, uh so you know, you get an oddly shaped lot, you need a little bit of um relief, uh you're authorized to do that. Section, um the next section is just, uh let's see, um signs and a couple of other things we wanted to focus. Yeah, of course, go ahead.
Is everyone okay with, with these parking requirements? Hasn't been no discussion about?
And I wanna ask a question is, th, this is the minimum parking requirements, right?
That's what's on the.
It's not a maximum.
Correct.
Right, yeah, yeah. So let's real life this for a second. You're gonna uh go and um build a three fam in the downtown station area, so you have three units, you're gonna have to do three off-street parking spaces. Um I think some things to consider is, is, you know, is, if you're on a four thousand square foot lot, might not be space to create uh three parking spaces. There's also a cost associated with it, so you know, um that could maybe be lower or maybe you could build in relief uh if, in, in circumstances when there's not ability to, to build the spaces. Uh so some different things to consider.
I think that the, to David's point and to your point is that, you know, you wanna encourage density and you have zero parking per unit, right? And so on, on-street parking only. Um but I don't know that that necessarily flies in the, you know, in the path for this. And if we're the special permit granting authority under major project review or, you know, site plan review, I should say, then we have that flexibility if there, you know, a hardship does arise on a small lot and you can demonstrate that, then that's fine, right? I mean, it's.
So is that something that would be possible now? So if somebody came and said, I can't fit three spaces, they can get a special permit or something to, or a or would that be ZVA?
Would that be a waiver of this?
That would be, that would be a variance.
So that would be for ZVA? And they could do that, they could apply for that.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's the reason.
Yeah.
Alright.
I don't know how you would do less than one space per dwelling unit, because then how do you decide who gets the space?
You gotta pay more.
Yeah.
But the, the condos are parking spaces in Boston and they pay a million dollars for the parking space.
So we we say you know, two spaces per three family? You can't really do one and a half.
I think the thing is too, and I, we've tested a little bit, Eric and I, that the conversions that we've seen in the last two years in front of ZVA as of right, all needed variances for something else. Right, so it's not as though the parking is gonna trigger the only variance you gotta go to ZVA. And if, God bless you, if that's the only thing you're gonna have to do, right? But um but I think you have to put something in writing that, you know, seems to make sense. It's the underlying, you know, law of the land today. Um and I don't know that we need to shine more light on it and it's gonna be a case-by-case basis anyways, in my opinion.
Section three does not preclude the other portions of the zoning requirements, right? It's, that's part of it is it's, you're allowing it, you're allowing the use under certain circumstances, but not everybody is necessarily going to be able to meet those circumstances. You have the way around the variance.
So, Beverly.
Yeah, the, the problem about parking is, is really prop, is very difficult to parse. First of all, a certain percentage of people who live in our community don't have cars. Uh here in Portland, Maine, where I happen to be sitting right now, um it's about ninety-two percent have cars and eight percent don't. So if you have a hundred units, you can make an argument for less than one per unit. You can make an argument for ninety percent in you pretty well. But when you only have three units, you know, it's either two or three, it's not two and a half, right? Cause you're only, and so in this case, I, I think these are reasonable. Uh downtown, you're more likely to only have one car if you're close to transit and at least that's what we'd like to encourage within the transit station. Further out, one point five reflects both bigger units and, and maybe not as much access to alternative modes. But these feel right to me for um three, three-unit buildings.
Thank you, Beverly.
I agree.
This is one point five for the West Gloucester station area. So what's the rationale, uh underlying district? Do we think it makes sense though? I mean, is there a reason it should be different than the downtown station?
Let's figure lots in the most part.
Figure lots, but also maybe the, the square footage is bigger and so the household may have two cars. But you can have four point five spaces. You know, we're not talking, if, we're, we're only talking about three units is allowed by right, correct? So it might be one point five spaces per two units and the third unit is one, is one way. Cause four point five, you can't build a half of a parking space and the rule would be to, to uh round up anyway. So I, I just don't know. But it's, it's a tough one when you only talk about three units.
I think we should stick with the underlying zoning. Just, does the underlying zoning, underlying zoning say round up? When you do it?
Can't remember.
You probably have to be more specific here, because if we're saying this is what controls, we should probably have a note for that as well.
So either round up or round down and, and the point is, I mean, you can have half a space, so i, it is important to answer the question.
I'll look that up after this. Yeah, true.
Okay.
Any other parking questions? Thank you, Alex, for that.
Um one more thing, the word residential, now that I'm thinking about it, A, parentheses residential cannot be struck, right? Cause it's all residential in the MFOD.
Perfect. Next slide then. So the inclusionary or affordable housing um uh is uh an interesting discussion that I think we should have. Um the way the language is structured now or should be structured now um is that uh you would have an existing section five point one-one for affordability. It does not meet the uh guidance, the compliance guidelines, which from HLC, which is a ten percent of units, eighty percent of AMI. Um so we've structured the language because of, we're quite sure when the EFA and uh the review would happen relative to this discussion. So the way the language stands now is you have an EFA that shows the higher level of affordability is achievable. Section five one-one point uh applies. If for some reason HLC does not feel that the EFA works or that the zoning works, you have an automatic step to the exist, to what's in the compliance guidelines, it's compliant. So you don't have to come back, in other words.
EFA again, uh economic feasibility.
Economic feasibility analysis, yes, thank you. So, and that is done to show the level of affordability that is achievable within a specific community.
State is okay with requiring ten percent of units to be affordable at eighty percent AMI without an economic feasibility analysis. So you have that in there. Um but if our economic reason, you know, economic feasibility analysis proves the existing inclusionary zoning for Gloucester, which is fifteen percent and eighty is feasible, then we can, then we can go that. So it's just a, a, a way to make sure that, that, that it's feasible.
And not, not an impediment.
Yeah.
And that you wouldn't have to come back, you know, and redo something. It's just an automatic, okay, this doesn't work, that this does.
So RKG is working on that for the two um higher density districts, and if we have that answer, we may be able to just
Exactly.
Strike that whole second paragraph if we're at that point um in the public hearing process or before uh there's a decision made. But if not, then, then this is kind of that bell and suspenders.
And there were several communities, uh towns who were going to town meeting in spring who were doing it this way. Obviously, it's a lot harder to bring things back to town meeting, so it's easier for them, but it's not a bad option for a city as well.
I'd say it's pretty likely that the existing inclusionary requirements are gonna be feasible. They're fifteen at eighty.
It's good.
Any, any other questions on the affordability?
I mean, just to point out that this also says we round up ours, we says we, they would round down, but it is what it is, right?
Yes, so the round down, um it partly depends on what your threshold is. But I had a couple of communities this spring where it was applying to five or more units. And so if you round off on five units, you're suddenly at twenty percent, not ten percent. So again, you have an EFA that complies, you're going back to your existing zoning, so, but that's why that's there. Next slide, please. So you do have site plan review standards that you can use in um, in the site plan uh approval process. Uh I've just listed the buckets here, uh so consistent with site plan review, um uh you're allowed to look at circulation, access, parking, you're allowed to look at landscape, uh which can include the plantings, location, mechanicals, dumpsters, surface parking, how integrated garages step. Because, because pretty much anything is probably going to be either infill development or rehabilitation of existing. Um I did add some guidance for infill development that discusses, okay, if you're putting a building into an existing context, um you need to think about the massing and scale proportion relative to the other buildings, how the entries work, materiality. I also put in some uh guidance for the relationship of multiple buildings on a lot. So that, you know, again, it has to be a consistency of the design around. Uh happy to go into them in more detail if you like, but just wanted to have a bucket on the screen.
Maybe I missed this one. Does it say someplace in here that the planning board has kind of jurisdictional authority over the site plan review? I know that it, I'm sure it does.
Yes. Yeah. We, we reference five H and, and you are.
Yes.
The site plan.
Alright.
So yes, your site planner, um I have run a few, across a few communities where their site plan review process would not work for section three A, your site plan review process pretty much does, so we're just referring to it and then saying, hey, there's these additional standards in here that we'd like the development to follow.
I guess the only thing I would highlight is these standards are applying to projects with six or more units. So for the three family, you wouldn't be looking at all of these standards. You actually wouldn't be sending a three family to a site plan review.
Yes, we um, uh, yeah. We, we talked about the, the appropriate threshold and, and felt that was the, in, in our discussions, that it was six units or more rather than three units or more, so, but obviously happy to discuss that further. Uh that would reduce the um number of projects that would come to, to those that would be the likely to have the best of that.
Um we have never had building design standards before, right? So that, that would be good for us. I really like these. Um also, do we need to say? No, there's no historic district in MFOD, right?
Yep.
Right?
Yeah.
I think she was just agreeing that there's no. Um this is probably nitpicky and wordsmithy, but under section C, additional requirements for multi-b buildings on a lot. Um item number two, a, a pedestrian network shall connect parking to entities of all buildings and buildings to each other. Entries, I'm sorry. Um paved, I mean, is it cobblestones, is it non-pervious, pervious? I know this is one of David's pervious topics, but.
Nothing wrong with the pervious topic. We can talk about materiality. We can just note that there should be a connecting pedestrian network and not speak to.
Yeah, to material.
Yeah. So we could just take a pedestrian network, for example, just leave it like that.
Any other questions under that?
If not, we can go to my last slide and then we can always jump back again. So there were a couple of additional changes. Uh one to add the MFOD, I'll lay family overlay district to the list of districts, uh so that's the first one. And then to make site plan review applicable to this, we're adding it to five point eight point two. And then you actually have a section five point three zero already, which is permitting of certain pre-existing multi-family uses. This had a sunset, um uh so that the zoning expired in twenty twenty. And the idea was just to remove this, uh your, your sunset and zoning and put this in its place using the same number.
We think we need to define MFOD if we're putting those letters in five eleven or else spell it out. Cause I think.
We could add the definition to that.
Yeah, cause I think um.
That section in five eleven you're speaking of?
Yes.
So it's a listing of district by abbreviation?
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
So, but you won't know what, what MFOD means, um transition.
Before. Well, so it's a little bit circular, because the MFOD is gonna tell you to go look at five eleven. And then five eleven is gonna say this applies to these districts, which includes the MFOD.
I know, but um the what are we, what section? Three. No, we're in five. So the use, the dimensional regulate, regulations and use table appear in section three.
You're just saying chronologically in the ordinance, you're gonna see MFOD and not know what it is yet.
Yeah.
Okay, keep reading.
Exactly.
You're, you're saying that people aren't going to be curious and say, I can't go to sleep until I find out what MFOD is. Um, yes.
That's the beauty of the online page, they can type and search MFOD and it'll go right to the section.
Um, uh yes, I mean, to Greg's point, where I was following the existing formatting, where they referred to, uh they're all referred to by their uh abbreviation, so.
But it's not listed in the use, in the section two use for dimensional regulations, section three.
Yeah, that's actually a question we didn't discuss was we want um some of the communities I've worked with, uh the um dimensional regulations stay within zoning themselves. Some of it, we have it outside the, the, the article and it points to, hey, this column is going to be added to your table of dimensional standards or table of uses. So I've kept it all within the article itself, because frankly, it's a lot easier to discuss that way, but that is an option.
So we, we have other lay, other, other overlay districts, how are they handled?
Their, the mixed-use overlay district is within the, the ordinance itself.
Yeah.
Yeah. For the o, the overlays are, are usually more specific and, and within a, a section, a section five.
Right.
And I think that table is really maxed. We have.
Yeah, no, I, I.
Well, it's one of the reasons I couldn't suggest.
Fifteen, fifteen districts, does it throw another column on the menu?
I don't, this is. Yeah, I don't wanna add it to the table.
No, I understand, yeah. I mean, we could, I mean, it would break the, the convention of that, but we could, after BB, say.
Because it's just, you're not listing the watershed protection overlay district or, or
Yeah.
Anything else in the um, in section five point one-one.
We could, we could write it out. I mean, it would, it would be.
Or just write it out, yeah.
Yeah, we could just write it out.
Yeah.
And then maybe parenthetically say MFOD.
That's what I would do, you know, that way you got the name and the abbreviation.
Um so same with five point eight point two projects in the MFOD and um, right, okay, yeah.
I thought you were grabbing your, your, your purse.
And that's my last comment.
No, I'm grabbing my, my cord. Um and thinking at the same time, it's really hard to multitask. So, yeah, do we need to go back to the parking issue, which we did not resolve, because because if we're gonna recommend to move this along with the city council, we have to have it just right.
Well, we are questions and discussion, so I'm gonna stop sharing. And we have a couple of things.
Real court?
Here.
Yeah. Sorry, Dave. Also, this draft is dated eight-six.
And we will have a draft dated eight-eight. We're done with all the revisions.
Okay, but how would we recommend it would belong tonight unless we, do you want?
So everything that so far that has been discussed is in that draft. So, okay. Take your blue pen.
I did.
And make one, okay, there you go. So it'll be the one that you're holding.
Okay.
And you write on the top, eight-eight.
Alright.
She recommended to move it forward with the changes discussed.
As an end, I will. It's just that the motion that I would make says the draft dated today, which would make sense.
Do you want one of those things?
Just right.
Uh, Jay? Yeah, why don't you pass one of those now?
I'll take one too.
I think I got to the next. Yeah, I think.
Oh, let's do it. Okay, thank you. So what more discussion that we want to have on pertinent things like you just.
So I don't know that we have any explicit language that talks about rounding.
We don't.
Has occurred is if it has been a fraction of a space, half space, then it's been rounded up. I don't think it's better than these down. So that would be five for.
Or it hasn't been rounded at all. What is what really happens when?
I think it's been rounded up. But we can, I mean, we can look at, I mean, I guess what would you like to do? But I think the convention has probably been rounding up if it was a half space. So three would require four and a half, which would be less.
So maybe we just said it. Specify that.
Well, we have a, we have two options, actually. If you want it to be five, then you can say one point five for the first two units and uh, which is three and then two for the third unit, which makes it five. So, or you can make it one point five for the first two, three, and one for the third and make it four. That's more explicit. It's not an issue for the bigger, bigger projects because there's more movement. But when you only have three, it's either four or it's five.
Or you could say the number of spaces required for.
I'm sorry.
Or we could just designate the number of spaces for a three family.
You could. You could. I'm just saying it's, you're going to put a fraction on it. It's problematic.
I think it should just be three spaces for a three family in downtown.
As a minimum.
I mean, all the, everything else is very similar. I don't know why you would need more parking in West Foster.
It's going to make it harder.
To achieve. There's also design standards for five spaces.
Meaning people could put more spaces if they wanted.
Sure, it's a minimum.
Yeah, it's all your.
Yeah, so maybe we, can we have the word minimum between the and parking, the minimum parking permits?
Oh, that's helpful.
Yes.
Nobody's going to add parking spaces they don't need. By and large, especially on small sites. So minimum is, minimum is the word here.
Remembering too, for downtown station, West Foster station, you allow one and two families as well. So, you know, again, somebody puts in a single, single family, it's, they would have one point five spaces the way West Foster is currently written.
Yeah, it's awkward.
They change how you look at it.
So then just one space a unit.
Once they see it in their response.
But again, this is grounded in the way things are today, you know. But that doesn't mean that it has to stay that way. Just the one.
I'm Switzerland on this one. So is one space per dwelling unit in a West Gloucester station area the consensus of the board?
It is for me because you can always add more spaces. You know, I know the area and if you want to encourage transit use, you make a minimum of one. And then anybody who builds it can make, can instead of putting in three, they can put in four, five or six. Right? And they can see what the market, that becomes a market driven decision.
Yeah.
Uh, the minimum is a development standard that you either read or you have to get a variance from. So they're different.
So on the subdistrict line where it says that and parking requirements, we're going to add minimum parking requirements? Minimum to that or not?
Yes, yes.
Well, there, yeah, I was thinking here, but that's the same.
Yes, true. We can add it right there as well.
Yeah.
Do we need to go back to the height? Is everyone good with thirty five feet?
I think we just want to make sure that we're not having any disagreement between the height exception of thirty five and above or the the schoolhouse district.
You had said something to me about the the model. You have modeled thirty five everywhere or?
So
Fifty five.
The three districts, downtown station, West Gloucester station, and Maplewood Ave were all modeled on thirty five feet. So we don't have any issue with that.
Right.
But then with the schoolhouse road, because we're allowing fifty five and section three, six says it shall not apply for height over thirty five feet. But then the que, I think one of the questions was can I pursue a height exception? And so if we're saying it doesn't apply, then you're also saying you're capped at fifty five, which I think is fine.
Yes, exactly. Capped at, capped at fifty five is fine. My concern was if you had modeled it at fifty five, then you were requiring a special permit to go from thirty five to fifty five. That would be an issue. We have a longer conversation. But I think, I think you're fine.
Can I, can I say too, this is a question of fifty five is essentially five stories. The maximum density is forty per unit, I mean, forty per acre, correct? So you're, you're not going to need a building more than four or five. Mostly at forty, a unit's the acre, you're going to be looking at a four story building. Depending on whether you have at grade or you know, below grades parking could change that.
We're so impressed that you know that.
I'm a planner. Supposed to know this. Yeah, I'm supposed to know this stuff. I write code too. Emily does a nice job. But I write code too. I used to write code. I'm retired code writer, so.
Oh, what a wonderful thing to be.
Among other things, I also happen to be an expert in parking, by the way. So for twenty five years, I was the planner of record for the city of Portland, Oregon's public garage system. So I know a lot about public garages, anyway.
Next subject.
So other general questions? Didn't Sean have one to that we addressed as?
Um, I think.
We addressed actually everything except for, he brought up parking in the front yard setback, which I didn't understand.
I think that's when the, it's at ten feet.
Yeah, so I think, I mean, that's, I think there's, there's a little bit of a tension which I think we've in some ways addressed some of the concerns that I think he raised at the last meeting of the, you know, there's so many structures that are noncompliance and there's so many lots that are noncompliant. That's the reason for four thousand. I think with Emily's addition to a little bit of flexibility in the setback, particularly the front yard setback for the siting of new building or redevelopment is, is certainly creating more flexibility than the ordinance provides for right now. And because there's such limited area in the front yards, many of these, these existing homes, it does seem like it makes more sense to be locating the parking as it is required now to be either on the side or in the rear. So, um, I, I mean, I think that that also just from a curve cut perspective, from leaving a house to have, you know, you know, spaces in the front of the, front of the lot is, you know, again, it's, it's something that he raised. I just don't know that that this is, that flexibility is necessarily needed.
Yes, you, you, you have in the parking, the ability to waive the requirements as part of the site plan review for the location. So that helps somewhat if you wanted to prohibit parking in front of the main building. You could put that into the development standard, but again, you do get unsized lots. And so the way it's set up now, you kind of have the maximum flexibility to address the conditions on the lots. Uh, you know, if that's what you, what you're looking for.
It has to do with, if you park in the front, you're taking away street parking to a certain extent, right? That's kind of what would happen.
You're creating a condition between, on planner speak, right? You're, you're creating this condition where if you're parking in the front of a lot, you've got the car, you've got the sidewalk, you've got the street. You're potentially creating an unsafe condition between pedestrian and driver. So generally, you want the car to be on the side of the rear setback. The way I frequently do it when I'm doing very detailed design standards is I, I divide the side setback into like the front side, a rear, a side side and the rear side. Parking's allowed on the side side of the rear side. Parking's not allowed between building and the street. You don't have to go that far necessarily, but, but that is, you know, one way of thinking about it.
Parking in the front just typically doesn't look very good.
Yeah.
Well, there's the aesthetics as well, but it's the safety conditions too that make it tricky.
Yeah.
You don't always know if there's parking in the front, which is the sidewalk and which is the driveway and which is the parking area. So as soon as you get that sort of lack of, of communication between pedestrian and driver is when you get potential conflicts.
Probably tight, four thousand square foot lot have on the side.
Yeah.
I mean, is that, Beverly, there's a question for you.
Yeah.
Can you?
Well, it's a toughie. Yeah, you know, okay, first of all, if you do three, a side by side, three units, the typical building is a single garage and an entry and then two stories of living area above. So the issue of whether it's in the front or on the side is moot because it's incorporated into the building, okay? A four thousand square foot lot has a forty foot width. A typical townhouse, side by side, and David would know this better than I, is about, the minimum is about eighteen feet, seventeen feet. Now, if you can get or maybe sixteen feet wide, so three sixteens is, tell me guys, forty eight? On a four thousand square foot lot, you're not going, you're going, if you're going to build a triplex on a four thousand, it's going to be one on top of the other. Then you do have to find a place to put the parking. That's not part of the building, right? Am I correct in that? I'm just looking at a forty foot front.
And we also can agree or disagree with the way this is all modeled. Because a four thousand square foot lot was, was supposed to be able to accommodate a three family and six parking spaces.
Really?
I mean.
I'd like to see them.
Spaces per unit and a certain allowance, at least a thousand square feet. It's assuming.
Yeah, it's stacked. You can't get it long wise because you have to have a certain width of a unit. And I would say sixteen feet's pretty much the maximum. I mean, the minimum and three sixteens is more than a, than a four thousand square foot lot is wide. If it's a forty, you know, if it's forty by a hundred. I'm just not sure how you, how you get it in there.
Building types. We've got a longer conversation about the model, but.
You can get it on a five thousand square foot lot, but not with the setback. It's these, these lots, these four and five thousand square foot lots is really stacked, stacked units, not townhouses. I believe.
Yeah, I think it's. I, I guess I, my only question is just to introduce her. Oh, sorry. Just to do Zanny and then, city council, Zanny. I just have two, sort of after going through this, just because I like things to be really explicit, like normally. Normally I have to look at the zoning one and question and somebody's saying, no, it says I can do this. And we, I say, no, actually. So I like it to be really explicit in that. And my thought was, and this is just really detailed, but when you have multi building on lots and it says that you can do more than one principal building in the Maplewood Avenue, do we also just want to add some steps? You can't in the other districts. Just to make it explicit, yeah, right? And then the other thing that I was thinking is that when we have that discussion about accessory uses, there's confusion just in this room is to relate it to the, because you have a definition of accessory uses in this affiliate district, so to relate it to a reference to that definition. So there isn't any confusion in that. And then the other one that I thought of was when you get to five thirty point nine, site plan review, that section could, I think that we need something in there that makes it more explicit about how the process for site plan review, because I read this and I was a little confused with like, what does this mean? So, but you get it, but if it's something very explicit for six or more dwelling units, I think what this means is that you also have to apply for spite, uh, site plan review. So it's a separate application process. Is that what we're saying here?
As I understand your process, you would apply for site plan review. And I, I apologize, I've read two different sets of zoning today, so if I mess this up, it's because I'm thinking of the other community. Think you have to do the site plan review before you go for the building permit.
Correct.
Yes, so you would, so this is one application for site plan review. If they receive site plan approval, then it's the application for the building permit.
Okay, so I would put that in there, okay, to make that more explicit so that, that people understand that. And then. Thoughts?
I guess the site plan review is only going to apply the Maplewood subdistrict and the Schoolhouse Road subdistrict.
You can make it that.
What if we just set site plan review for those and then not for the others?
Yep.
Right, right. And then my other. While you're thinking of it, let me just check on the site plan review business. So you want to change five point thirty point nine to say, what?
Site plan review is, is required in the Maplewood Ave subdistrict and the Schoolhouse Road subdistrict.
Six and more.
Yeah.
So just make it look that that was required.
I guess a great idea.
So if you're in the other district, the other two districts, and you come in and you want to build a triple deck around your property, who's, who's looking at the issue of the parking?
Building inspector.
Building inspector.
Yep.
Okay. I think that was if. But I think, I think that was. I think, I'm just. So just before we make motion, let me review the changes that we've made. So this is a draft dated August eighth of the sixth. And in five point three zero point four point one dimensional tables, we want to shade the cell that says accessory uses and refer back to the definition. Under A, we want to add a phrase to the effect. You cannot do whatever this is saying, even do in the other districts. In five point three zero point six point one off street parking, we are adding the word minimum in both the sentence and in the table. And in the West Gloucester station area, we're changing it to one space per dwelling unit. And five point three zero point nine site plan review, we're striking that section and restating it uh, to explain site plan review application processes required for Maplewood Ave and Schoolhouse Road districts for six or more units. And in additional requirements for multi buildings on a lot, which is design standards C, we're striking word paved in the second sentence. That's the second section. And under additional changes, we're spelling out MFOD in both cases in five point one one and five point eight point two. Right?
Do we also want to expand, you need to make that same reference to the districts? Or are we comfortable with it sending you there? So we just talked about the six or more in the Schoolhouse Road area and the Maplewood area. We could also use that same language.
Yeah.
In the applicability of.
At the risk of keeping everyone here.
No, this is, let's get it right.
I think there is some power in the name and doesn't necessarily have to just say multifamily overlay. That gets people a little bit more to the purpose, which is to encourage variety of housing options near transit. Um, so we could go with a, a name that kind of promotes that a little bit more. Uh, maybe it's more appropriate to do that in, in coordination with city council. Also, maybe at that point, we was striking up, but I just wanted to throw that out.
Do you have a suggestion?
How, housing choice overlay, housing opportunity overlay, something along those lines.
I would really, I would really mess up the MFOD that goes all over your hair. Wouldn't like that at all.
I think this, the city council should.
The one good thing about work, right?
The one good thing about work, right?
Uh, I just, you know, my feelings will not be hurt if you don't like multifamily overlay district, that's an easy change, so.
It's pretty straightforward. Simple, simple.
Well, we can, we can promote it to city council and say, we urge you to, you choose a creative name. Not on us, we're not the creative board.
It's just the average person, a multi-family doesn't really gain much, so.
I've lost the draft, I'm sorry. Yeah, I I mean.
Thank you for your suggestion.
Yes.
But I, and I, and I, we appreciate your perspective, right?
Yes.
You're coming from, you know, from a a state level perspective versus, you know, a local level. And, you know, we've got all these acronyms and back shore overlays and hooked up, you know. And I think the, I don't know that the multifamily overlay district is offensive. And I don't know that there's going to be much gained on, you know, smooching it up a little bit, but um, but yeah.
Beverly, any other comments from Portland? Good?
Nope, it looks good. I have agree about multifamily because that's the rubric that everybody's been using. And.
MBTA housing, anyone?
Yeah, right, right. That would be, that would be a very good.
We're mobilizing opposition.
I have to like the housing opportunity because it's so positive. But everybody makes this distinction between single family and multifamily.
That's enough.
Thank you.
What's your comments? Well, next steps. Yeah.
Yeah, I guess. If you're comfortable with this draft, then I think Jane's probably.
I'm ready for the motion.
Okay.
And if she does, then it'll be forward to the city council um, to be referred out at the next meeting for public hearings.
Of course.
Okay. In accordance with section one point one one point two A of the Gloucester zoning ordinance, the planning board initiates amendments to the following sections of the zoning ordinance. To permit as of right multifamily uses in compliance with MGL. Chapter forty A, section three A by inserting a new section five point three zero multifamily overlay district parentheses MFOD and associated zoning map, both dated eight eight twenty four. Good thing we added that um, as amended at this meeting. And adding multifamily overlay district after VB in section five point one one three parentheses one. And by adding E period projects in the multifamily overlay district of six or more dwelling units. In the Maplewood Ave and Schoolhouse Road districts. In section five point eight point two applicability of the site plan review ordinance. Uh, I move that we forward that to city council or recommend.
Well, that's that's it. You already, you already covered by the, by the, by the.
Oh, I initiated.
One eleven two A, because that's what it does.
Okay, great.
So we have a motion, I need a second.
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 Everyone.
We'll get it to our senior member, Hank McCarroll. There we go.
Very good.
So because Beverly is remote, we'll do a roll call vote. Member Noonan?
Yes.
Member Remsen?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
Member McCarroll?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
Yes.
Okay.
Here's your.
That's the, that's.
That's the same for document.
Um, so I will share my screen with one last slide. Um, based on what just occurred. So um, this should look familiar, it's been on the last slide of the last five meetings. So with agreement on the initiation to forward to the city council, um, it'll be forwarded to clerk's office tomorrow morning. Um, it will be placed on the agenda for the city council on the thirteenth. They will refer to planning and development and the planning board for public hearing. Um, we have discussed holding a pub, third public forum on the proposed amendments now that, as they've been just um, initiated on Wednesday, uh, August twenty first. And now that the P A system is working again in the auditorium. Back in the auditorium, um, if not, um, alternatively, we would use uh, Rose Baker. And we have targeted um, holding joint public hearings with the city council. Um, for the initial presentation, which Emily will be present at as well as R K G on uh, September eleventh with a second hearing date of um, the twenty sixth. And from that point, we'll see where we are in the process to potentially schedule additional uh, hearing dates if needed. Um, again, the action plan timeline that was developed a long time ago. Um, we have ever so slightly moved that red dot from from the last meeting. Um, we are in uh, the legislative legislative session process of adopting zoning. Um, and again, we've always targeted trying to make that submission to that, since D H C D, but now they're H L C. Um, in the timeframe of uh, October, November, and I think we are kind of on target to do that.
Wait, excuse me, uh, just for clarification, did you say we were gonna have a meeting on the twenty first or?
So the twenty first will be a public forum um, led by the consultant team, um, planning staff will be there. It's a Wednesday, it's it's for the public, it's, you're welcome to attend, but you know, we'll be, we'll be promoting that for anybody that wants to learn now what the specific proposal is. You know, stemming from all all of the.
What time are you proposing?
Uh, six o'clock start.
So it's not a public hearing.
Correct.
It's not a meeting. It's just a forum to present and let people have a, well, not really even have opinions, but ask questions.
Sure.
Now, I think it's 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 good timing. I mean, very often when there's a zoning amendment, going to the city council. If somebody hasn't followed the planning board process, they're learning about it at that first presentation of the public hearing. Um, this is an opportunity for people to understand hopefully well in advance of of the public hearing so they can formulate their questions and opinions about the proposal.
And we get a chance to see the presentation before then, or?
Um, I mean, we we could certainly circulate it. You know, I think I think it's gonna be, again, probably taking a couple of, a couple of half steps back. Really kind of defining the process to get to the point that Jane asked me to summarize in three minutes earlier. And maybe it'll be a lot easier when you're not asked on the fly. Um, so hopefully that, um, you know, will bring people up to speed as to where and how um, the planning board arrived at most of that spin.
Great.
Um, can can I raise an issue? Nine eleven is a Wednesday, it's nine twelve is a Thursday.
Yes, it is, it is specifically a Wednesday.
Oh, it is a Wednesday, okay, thank you. And this is, oh, I see, is it, it's for city, okay.
We discussed that date?
It's it's fine, okay.
It's fine, I just want to make sure that it wasn't, that you meant Thursday the twelfth. You mean Wednesday the eleventh and Thursday the twenty sixth, correct?
Yes, correct.
Gotcha. Okay.
You know, things to talk about? Uh, this evening.
Okay, when you're ready.
Oh, I moved to Germany.
That's okay, have a motion.
Second.
Back in a second, need a roll call vote, Beverly. Member Noonan?
Yes.
Member Remsen?
Yes.
Member Rosen?
Yes.
Member McCarroll?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
And member Bookin?
Yes.
Okay, have a good night.
Thank you.